...231 Public Law 1975, Title: Open Public Meeting Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice. Said notice was posted at the entrances of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Township clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Number flags, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Kuzma, please.
Mr. Valzano?
Here.
Mr. Cornesella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolero?
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exact from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education research to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel. Be further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. I just need a roll call. I need a first and a second.
First.
That's fine. All right.
Bye.
For the audience, we probably shouldn't be no longer than 20, 25 minutes, hopefully. Kuzma, please.
Mr. Valzano?
Here.
Mr. Cornesella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
You are here to give a presentation on the discipline report for the middle school. Happy year. My hope.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the middle school model and its impact on the classroom environment. So get ready. So the question. Research tells us, and I think common sense also tells us, that the more time a teacher is spending correcting misbehaviors, the worse of an impact that has on the learning environment. So one of our questions was, in moving to the middle school model, would moving to the middle school model mitigate disciplinary issues and thus improve the classroom environment and the learning experience for the students? Show of hands, how many people here, middle school was the easiest time in their lives? Okay, not one. Middle school is a very difficult time for students. It's a very crucial time for students. Students are going through more changes at this point in their academic career than any point else in their academic career. Huge, important period for students. We also know that success in middle school is very often indicative of future academic success in high school and beyond. So students who do well in middle school typically do well in high school and college. Those who struggle in middle school often face challenges going forward. Prior to becoming a middle school, John Walker Middle School was a middle school in name, but it really was essentially a junior high school. A junior high school is basically the same as a high school. It's just the grades are pushed down a little bit. So students were going from an elementary school environment, where they were with one teacher for most of the day. They were with the same classmates for most of the day, and a lot of supports were available. In a high school model, students have to be independent learners. They need to have those skills. So an ideal middle school teaches students how to develop those schools, those skills, to be those independent learners with support from their teachers. Support that we hope to gradually lean off so that the students can become more independent by the time that they leave eighth grade. So how do we support students? The main way we support students is through the teaming approach. We have our four core teachers, language arts, math, social studies, and science. They work as a team, and they share a group of common students. Over the course of the day, the team has a daily meeting period. This is a very important time for the teachers and for the students because during this time, they can actually sit and discuss students and get to learn more about the students and how to best support their students. A teacher may say, "Mr. Materia, Johnny's having a lot of trouble in my class. He seems to be doing well in your class. What strategies are you using?" And they can share that information. Similarly, at this time, it's a great opportunity to make those proactive communications. Teachers can reach out to other members of the school community. They can make those proactive phone calls or emails home. But all in all, it's just everybody can work together, put their heads together to say, "How can we help these kids? How can we support these students?" A second important part of the middle school model is advisory. Advisory in John Walker Middle School is a class that meets twice a month, where students have another adult who can work as an advocate for them. That's their advisor. In advisory, students are taught those skills that will help them to become more independent and overcome some of those hurdles that sometimes get in the way of academic success. We know in middle school, the social world is huge. For a lot of kids, it's everything. So students who maybe need some support in how to have healthy relationships with their peers, how to mediate conflicts or overcome conflict with their peers, if we can help them with those problems, we know that a big distraction to learning can be avoided if students can focus more on those studies. Students who maybe have some difficulty with organizational skills or study skills, advisory would be that time when they can learn those skills to become more independent. So the data we're going to be looking at, we're going to be looking at write-up slips that came to the main office for three school years. 2013, '14, which was our last year as a junior high school; 2014, '15, which was our first year as a middle school; and then last year, '15, '16, which was our second year with the middle school model. We do have one shortcoming, and that is turnover. We are only a seven, eight building, so essentially we lose 50% of our students each year. However, despite that, I think if we look at this data, we can see, we could definitely see some trends. So if we look at overall discipline slips, our last year as a junior high school to our first year as a middle school, discipline slips actually went down 25%, so a dramatic decrease in disciplinary issues. Ms. Egan and I saw that it was such a significant drop, we were not certain how it would continue, but last year it actually decreased again to, and actually another 3% drop. One of the questions that was asked me by the academic committee was, "This is total discipline slip, so this is everything." We know in middle school, a lot of disciplinary issues have to do with things like students forgetting their student IDs at home. And how did that play into it? And looking at that data, student IDs actually account for about 40% of these discipline slips, but we see a positive trend where students, over the course of the three years, are forgetting their IDs less often. And this may seem like a trivial thing, but we know that this is something that is board policy. This is something that students are expected to be doing in the high school. They are becoming better prepared doing that in the middle school. Taking out that 40%, it's something like 40 to 44% per year, we actually see a 27% drop in discipline between those years. Won't be deemed as inappropriate behavior as a disciplinary category. We went from 128 instances of that our last year as a junior high school, going down to 79 our first year as a middle school, and then 30 last year, our second year as a middle school. This is something that really jumped out at me, vandalism. We had 15 incidents of vandalism within the school our last year as a junior high school. That dropped to two our first year as a middle school, and that dropped to one last year. What this tells me is that students are feeling more connected to their school, maybe taking more pride in their school, and this statistic I think reflects that. Teacher detentions. Not everything makes it to the main office. Something might be less severe. Teachers will assign their own detentions. And in those cases, they also do fill out a slip so that we have an awareness of that in the office. And as you can see, that declined dramatically over the course of the three years, from 88 to 37 to 11. HIBs. The number of HIBs that were reported, you see a little bit of a spike our first year as a middle school. Actually, five more HIBs were reported. This may be attributed to that there's maybe more communication between the teachers and the staff, or between the teachers and home, and more things are being made aware of and not something through the cracks. And then we see a significant drop last school year. I think kind of similarly, confirmed HIBs. If you look at that 2013, '14 school year, there were a lot of recorded HIBs, but in actually investigating them and looking at them, almost none of them were actually met the criteria for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Whereas our first year as a middle school, many of the ones that were investigated turned out to be confirmed hits. So I think that might be attributed to better communication. And then we have a drop in that for last year as well. One of the things that we did after our first year as a middle school was actually survey those teachers who were on team, our core teachers, to see how they felt about the year and what were their perceptions without seeing any of this data or discussing any of this data. 94% of teachers polled believe that the middle school model had a positive impact on the classroom environment. 88% said that they were able to collaborate with their colleagues in regard to classroom management. And teachers agreed that the team meeting and those proactive communications home were really the biggest reasons that we saw an improvement in that classroom environment. A couple of the teachers gave open-ended responses. I won't read all of these to you, but just to highlight a couple. Communication with both home and the students increased our ability to identify concerns and address them quickly and efficiently. The fact that we know more about each individual student as a person and learner, teaching them all and making that important connection has been much more productive. Of course, it's, there's a lot of good data. We as a middle school are always looking to reflect and improve upon our practice and make the school as good as we can and as supportive as an environment for the students as we can. So we did see there were a couple of areas we look at as far as disciplinary statistics. Class disruptions and, I'm sorry, disruptive behavior in and out of class and also altercations between students. After an initial 50 to 86% drop, after initially becoming a middle school, we saw a very slight increase in those categories last year, single-digit increases, which is still between a 25 and 50% decrease from the numbers that we were seeing as a junior high school. And we also, in looking at this information, a lot of these incidents were not happening in the classroom, but in those less supervised areas of the building. Maybe sometimes before and after school, outside of the building, in the hallways. In cases of harassment, intimidation, bullying, sometimes off school grounds and school hours entirely. So our next steps. Administration of middle school will continue to meet with the team leaders to get their feedback and find out what's working and what's not working in the classroom. Our student assistant coordinator, Mr. Capello, is looking for new ways to increase student conflict resolution, and advisory might be a means for that as well. We had a big focus the end of last school year, the summer, and then the start of this school year in looking at our students who were coming up to seventh grade and eighth grade and having communication between teachers to say, "Tell them a little bit about the students and figure out how to best support those students proactively coming into the seventh grade or eighth grade." We're going to be continuing to look at data and analyze the areas that need to be improved upon. We're going to be focusing on improving supervision in those areas where disciplinary issues or student behavioral concerns are the highest. And this also includes providing more training to our non-instructional staff. One of the things we're also looking at this year, we have a committee in the school that's called the Middle School Model Committee. And they were the people who really went out and researched the middle school model, saw how other schools did it, and used those ideas and tools to prepare, over the course of two years, for moving John Walker Middle School to a true middle school. We still have that committee going to improve each year. One of the things we're going to be looking at this year is school culture. Looking at things like our school pledge and finding more ways that we can have students contribute to their school and feel that sense of belonging in their school environment. Additionally, we're looking at ways to positively support students in making those correct decisions. And one thing we'll be starting this year, based on the pilot in the high school last year, is the Flex program, where we can provide more academic support to those students who are struggling academically. Like I said, I think we're always working to improve and reflect on practice, but based on this initial data for the first three years, I think we've seen very positive changes in the middle school, and we've seen that reflect academically. So we're hoping to continue to move in that direction. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very welcome. Assistant Ms. Davis reports, Dr. Kuyzer.
Thank you. So first of all, it was my pleasure to welcome back the staff on Tuesday, September 6th. Although I have to say, for many of the staff members, they had already been in the district for several weeks, prepared for the students who came on September 7th. I was thrilled to be able to welcome Mayor Scarapelli, Board President Mr. Kaczynski, and the Nutley Education Foundation President Lorraine Kaczynski to also welcome the staff. It was a very positive kickoff, and I'm hopeful that it is just the beginning of a wonderful school year. On Wednesday, our students did arrive, all bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. I was able to go around, visit the schools, get into many, many of the classrooms. For me, I think you already know this, the teachers and the students are the heart and soul of the district. So they're who get me out of bed in the morning. So I'm, for myself, really glad that everybody's back and that the students are in the buildings. We've had many firsts already, first football games, soccer games, marching band breakfast. This coming Wednesday morning is our first Yenikaw walks. So we're starting to find our rhythm a little bit in the second week. I do need to call your attention, though, to an emergent concern and to discuss the actions that I've been able to take to date. When I was hired, one of the things I was told repeatedly was that Nutley is a walking district. I think that I could easily say that the town takes a lot of pride in maintaining the neighborhood structure. And I will also tell you that in the eight weeks that I've been here, since arriving July 1st, one of the things that we've identified through the entry plan as a concern is the number of students who are not attending their homeschool and the number of variances that are pending decision or were pending a decision based on class size and enrollment. I've shared that concern in the last two public board meetings, and yet the requests keep coming in. I have to say, in our first three days of school, we had lines out the door to register new students to the district, which is wonderful for Nutley and for the complexion of the community. It's wonderful that people want to be here and be part of this town, but it does create some issues. The New Jersey Department of Education does not maintain a class-size guideline. Each district sets their own standard. Ideally, that would be about 20 students or below in kindergarten and first grade, 23 or below in second and third grade, and 25 or below in grades four and five. In the middle school and in the high school, grades six through 12, class size can sometimes rise up to 28 or more. I will tell you that for myself, I don't advocate for that if it's possible. Over the past weeks, we have been constantly monitoring enrollment and class size. I've had to make some very difficult decisions in recent weeks, and I do want to share those with you. We are above capacity at Radcliffe in grades kindergarten and grade four, in Lincoln School at grade five, and at Washington School in grades one and six. We've had to close those sections to new registrants, and anybody that does come in after this point is attending their class and section at another school where class size is smaller. Additionally, I've had to add a grade one section at Radcliffe School. And when we move into the trailers at Washington School next Monday, on the 19th, there will be a fourth section at sixth grade. We've also been providing before and after care for families who have to have children in two schools so that we can help them facilitate their pickup and drop off. It's just, it's a reality that we need to do, but we're trying to make it as easy as possible for families and community members. I do recognize that this is not ideal, but I will also tell you that class size, particularly in the primary grades, is correlated with student success later on, with student achievement overall. And it was a decision that I felt that I needed to make. We still have some large class sizes in other grades, in other schools as well, and I will continue to monitor enrollment. I have to say, as I've said the last couple of meetings, the next option is to move students back to their homeschool as per the variance agreement. And as stated on the agreement that every failure signs when they choose not to be at their homeschool, and we're able to grant that. I also recognize that there have been some high emotions as classes have been closed, as children have been sent to other schools. I hope you do have confidence that I've been consistent in my decision-making. For me, it's always about the children first, so it makes it a very easy decision for me. I know that we're doing the right thing. Space constraints, budget constraints often dictate some of the decisions that we're making related to class size, but there are other considerations as well. And I will say that as we approach a reregistration this year, as I've said before, I think we do really need to carefully consider the more than 100 students who are not attending their homeschool. It's a lot of students. I know, I've heard from many of you, this is new for Nutley. I'm sorry, I have to be the new person in town telling you that emperor has no clothes. But unfortunately, we're at a critical point related to space and enrollment and class size. I also want to be clear, because I've been asked this at least 50 times in the last week. I don't think the trailers will solve the problem. And please note that I always do call them trailers, not learning cottages, module learning environments. While they're easing the problem, and our contractor, ModSpace, has done a wonderful job integrating them into the school landscape, and our own custodial maintenance, and ground staff has done a tremendous, tremendous job getting everything ready. I don't want you to feel any more comfortable with them than I do as a long-term solution. We do need to be looking to the future. And I will also tell all of you that the board has taken a considerable amount of time to study the shifts in the town. They've been proactive in exploring the options to address the growth, to enhance the academic climate. I think that'll continue. In addition to consulting with the local real estate community, our friends, looking at the past history of housing and the demographics in town, the board has hired a demographer to analyze Nutley's population. And I think we mentioned at the last board meeting that the demographer will be joining us at the September 26th board meeting. So I do invite all members of the public to come and listen to Dr. Ross Haber, the demographer. He will be making a presentation on the current and projected enrollment numbers, including the students that are currently in the district as a whole and by school. And I have to say, I think this is the beginning of a much deeper conversation between the school district and the community, and I hope that you'll continue to make it your business to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kuyzer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to give you a little bit of an update on the project at Spring Harbor School. The exterior, the interior work has been finished. The architect just submitted a punch list to the contractor, and he may be addressing all of those items. I know there's been a lot of questions regarding the main entrance door. It's expected to be here this week. The stairs and the brickwork will also be hopefully finished by the end of this week. After that, we will do final measures for the railings, which are already here and just needed to be welded and grinded to be installed. The air, we have asked the contractor to clear the entire area and to remove all excess materials. The roof paddles are here, and the painting will be the last thing to be finished. So we are moving and pushing them to continue to move the project forward to get it all completed. At the high school, the work on the main entrance is expected to continue by the end of this month. Unfortunately, there have been some delays at the manufacturing plant, but I am receiving updates every few days and have constantly been in contact with both the architect and the contractor to make sure that this project is also going to be completed as soon as possible. As far as the modular units, is it open?
Yes.
Sorry. We do have a temporary certificate of occupancy for Yenikaw School, and as Dr. Kuyzer said, destruction is in full swing in those units. As far as the Washington School units, as of this afternoon, the plumbing is complete. Final inspection is scheduled for tomorrow. The electrical work will be completed by tomorrow morning with a call for the final inspection for tomorrow afternoon. The fire and burglar alarm connections will start tomorrow and should be completed within the next two days. The decking, the railings, and the final inspection on the work done by ModSpace is scheduled to take place on Thursday. In the meantime, starting tomorrow, members of our maintenance crew will be at Washington School assembling all of the furniture and getting it moved into the classrooms so that they are ready for today. And the only other item is that beginning next week, Godwin was 21st of September, we will, the fixed asset and technology inventory will get underway, and they will be started here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Now comes the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person should be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic had been heard. All statements must be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please inform until we state your name and address each and every time you address, I'm sorry, your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mr. Kuzma before you take the microphone. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution items now is the time. Okay, thank you. We will go to our resolutions. Ms. Sherman, will you take Resolutions and Academics, please?
Resonating with academic resolutions, one through three.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Valzano?
Yes. Mr. Cornesella?
Yes.
Mr. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Ms. Russo, will you take the administration resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move to the administration.
I'd like to move administrative resolutions one through three as listed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassama.
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella.
Yes.
Mrs. Stancheck Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Farara.
Upstanding to number one, yes, to two.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Ms. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. Mr. Farara, will you take finance resolutions, please?
Mr. President, I move finance resolution one through six as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassama.
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella.
Yes.
Mrs. Stancheck Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Farara.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Ms. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take personnel resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President. I move personnel resolution one, two, as well as an amendment to include the appointment of a coordinator to the world language and ELL bilingual.
Second.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Bassama.
Yes.
Mr. Carnicella.
Yes.
Mrs. Stancheck Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Farara.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Ms. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. At this time, Dr. Regir, would you like to stand up, please, and be recognized by our Board of Education as our new coordinator of world language and ELL bilingual? Thank you. We welcome your board. Obviously, you're sitting next to the person that you are replacing and moving forward with. I, we're looking for your guidance, and we appreciate you coming up, board members.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
At this time, we will have hearing of citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within this requirement as I stated earlier. All statements will be directed to me. Anyone wishing to come forward now is the time.
Kimberly Donahue, 27, Raymond Avenue, Nutley. I wasn't coming here tonight to speak, but Dr. Blazer raised the idea of the balance of the schools and figuring out where the parents are going to fall with their children and whose home school is where. I just hope that at the point when you have to start making those decisions on a case-by-case basis, that you look into where the siblings are at, because I'm going to tell you that it won't affect me, because I have all three of my kids at the high school, okay? But I will tell you that this first and only year that I'll ever have all three kids in one building, and I know what that's like, and I know what I went through with my family. So I'm just hoping that when you consider having some of the kids back to their home school, that you're taking a look at, do they have siblings who are in a specific school for a specific reason? Because one of the things that my son suffers from most, and a lot of his classmates do, is that per separation. And we're not just talking about a separation anxiety and then, you know, 10 days later they get over it. If they've been following a family, their sibling is in the school with them, moving that child could set the other child back a very long time. When Liam had to change schools, there are teachers here who could tell you, it would not take him 30 days as it would some other kids, 90 days, 120 days, half the school year. One year it was January before Liam settled in. When he moved from Radcliffe to Lincoln, it was January when Liam finally settled in. So hearing this for the first time, just mentioning that it's going back in my head that, you know, I don't know how you can apply it here and not apply it there, but just keep an open dialogue with special needs community on that, because it could affect in ways that you're not, you know, realizing at first that don't look the same on paper. Yes, it's devastating for any child to move from one school to another, but they eventually adapt and adjust and move on where these kids sometimes just can't. So just keep that in mind as you're going through things, please. And if there's, you know, any input you need, just let us know, and we'll be glad to help you out with some insight before you make any decisions. And I know that you're going to spend a long time thinking about it, because it's a hard decision for any kid, but just, just let's keep that in mind, okay? That's for the future kids, because I talk to those parents, like, I get phone calls. Oh my God, this is happening, and I'm sure if that starts to happen, I'm going to get, you know, 20 panicked phone calls. And I want to be able to say to them that, yeah, this is something that, you know, they're taking everything into account, and they haven't overlooked this effect over here. That's all I wanted to say.
And thank you so much for saying that. And I will say that last board meeting, when we talked about the variances and the ones that I had to deny, my consistent decision-making did have input from your community, just so you know. I see you're upset, and you should have a comfort level in knowing that the only variances that were granted were siblings and those students with IEDs.
See, like, I'm not a big sap, because all these little kids, I know their parents. These are the kids that run up to me and go, Ms. Kimberly, how are you? And I kind of look at them like, kind of like you look at the kids in the school district as you are, is these are the kids who are coming to my house for barbecues when nobody else invites them? And I just hate to see that. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. Welcome back, everyone. About six months ago, well, over six months ago, I filed an Oprah request on 2/9/16. The Oprah request was for architectural plans, drawings, concepts that were submitted to the Nutley Board of Ed in the years 2012 to 2016 from DeCaro Ravino Architects regarding John H. Walker Middle School expansion. One of the things that I received was an invoice dated March 31st, 2016, from DeCaro Ravino for architectural services rendered in connection with the above-referenced project, architectural sum fee $39,000 pre-reparendum. And then it states, "For services to include the high school and revisions to the middle school as per letter of agreement dated February 1st." The Oprah request was denied because the records fall within advisory, consultative, and deliberative exemption. My question is, and I've asked this question before, and I've also followed up on this six-month-old Oprah. As a taxpayer, where 48 percent of my taxes go to the school system, this invoice has been paid, and this work has been paid for, and these schemes and architectural drawings that are obviously, as stated here on the invoice, pre-reparendum, are important to me as a taxpayer and to other taxpayers in town. Legally, I'm not quite sure, but I am getting legal advice, once an invoice is paid by the taxpayers, okay, then that invoice becomes a public document. And yet, it is continuously said that these documents fall under advisory, consultative, deliberative, and exemption to Oprah, which may be so. In July of 2016, I'm sorry, in February of 2016, President Kaczynski, in a Nutley Sun article, you stated, when it related to the medical, medical, medical school, I got medical school on the brain, it's going to be an open forum. We are going to schedule two to three forums to get the taxpayer input on the school expansion. And that was in February, and the invoice was paid in March, okay? The Oprah request was also in February. So I made several attempts, several emails, when are these forums going to happen? Then in July, another news article. Mr. Kaczynski said, "Some concepts," which we paid for, obviously, with the $39,000, "include a four-story building with 22 classrooms." Right now, those are concepts. There are more steps, because we do want the public to have input. Now, we went from February, where we stated we were going to have two to three forums, to July, where we said we want public input, to the Oprah, the plans that want input from the public on, still being denied to the public because they're deliberative, consultative. So I don't need an answer. What I need is to know when, by when, will the public, taxpaying members of Nutley, be able to A, review the concepts, and B, have input into the concepts?
Soon.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Any old business to come before this board? Any new business to come before this board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing the management executive discussion pursuant to NJHSA 10412, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed the closed executive session at this time to discuss personnel and student matters. Be it further resolved and the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Hold a favor.
Aye.
Thank you.